Welcome to the, oh, you know what? I bet you Joyce Tex has been texting to say wait for her. But we'll open me, we don't need to do that. So let's call the meeting to order at 6:33. Welcome everyone to our July 25 regular meeting. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on June 27.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June 27, 2023.
I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
What answer, citizens? Margot, John?
Good to be here, man.
It's good to have you here. Okay, having none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that is appointments. We've had two, folks have stepped up and asked to sit on our zoning board of appeals, which is great, that'll actually fill that commission. Mary Renee Lamarck Muir and Sybil Higgins have volunteered. So one is with a term to expire 2024, the other is 2025.
Good, I know both from there. So I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Renee Lamarck Muir, alternate, term to expire 12/1/2024, and Sybil Higgins, alternate, term to expire 12/1/2025. And then we have to go to a town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah, we'll set that meeting for August 8. Immediately following the board selection meeting. I'll second the motion. I just want to say thanks to both of them for stepping up and filling those roles. They don't meet, that commission doesn't meet a lot, but when they do, I mean it's important. All those in favor? Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action regarding recommendations to the Board of Finance for the purchase of a sweeper, a wood chipper, accounting hardware, and SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus, air packs. We've been talking about the need for a chipper for quite some time. Town crew, really, we're coming handy out. From the looks of things right now, it might be a treat to have somewhere in the road that might need a chipper tonight. So that's something that we've been talking about, and I think we should move forward. I want to bring up the idea of the sweeper. That's been on our capital improvement list for quite a long time. It's continued, we continue to put it off, put it off. Really what's happening now is it takes us a couple, it takes us two, two weeks, maybe, maybe two weeks and a day or two, to sweep the streets. But we've been going out for the last couple, last couple summers. We've gone out, we get two days in, lose it for a day to get repaired, and three days in, it gets repaired. It's just, it's a 1994, it's done, it's done its service. But it's time for us, we need a new sweeper. Remember, we also rent that out once a year with a couple of special days to Chester, so we use it to make a little bit of money, too.
I think both of those pieces right there are part of public safety.
Yeah.
And I, again, a wood chipper's been on my list for several years. Because you see, the guys out there loading a brush in the back of the truck, and, you know, one of these times someone's gonna throw it back out. So I'm all for a wood chipper and a sweeper. And then we can talk about the other two.
Okay, the cost, just to get the cost up for that. The sweeper, the proposal we have for the sweeper, the better proposal we have is $320,000. The wood chipper is just shy of $100.
And what's availability for both of them?
The wood chipper is pretty available, the sweeper, it, you know, it looks like they're, it depends who you talk to, the two different proposals. One of them came in at about 18 months, the other one came in at about 10 months. So really, the 10 months is what we're looking at. But, you know, the reason, you'll see if we talk about it later, the proposals are only good, they're only given proposals good for 30 days. By the time we get them, by the time we do this, and then we go to a meeting, it's already passed that 30 days. So trying to build a little bit of buffer in there, just to see where we are. If you remember right, the auditors this year recommended that we upgrade our accounting hardware and the software that goes with it. We've gotten three different types we can up. The system we use right now, the MSI, it's the same system that Chester uses, that O-line uses, and we've been using it for a long time. They were just bought by some other group who have told us that they are, we are on the list for an automatic upgrade, but it's a few months down the road. Which I don't think is horrible.
Well, it goes back to the auditors. The auditors, you know, they're the ones that's keeping us straight. And if they're recommending it, again, I'm not a computer guy. I don't know about software, but if we need it, I think I support that.
I'm not a computer guy either. But it really, what it boils down to is it just makes the controls and some of the things that they were talking about during their, this year's audit, kind of built into the newer software. So that's something we want to look into, and that, that's a cost of probably around And then we come to the last item on this little list is the SCBA air packs for the fire department. Remember during, during the ARPA conversations, we put $60,000 towards more, more air packs. They have, they manipulated that a little bit and bought the packs, the retro, the packs that have the breathing, the breathing part of it, not the cans. So they have $19,000 left from that. With another $30,000, we can complete the, our, these SCBA, I don't know what you'd call it, not retrofit, but the upgrade, the new purchases of that. So they'll be all set for another tenure. I'm not sure what the lifespan is on that, you know, but they'll be good for at least 10 more years. So that's in here as well.
Yeah, well, that goes back to my initial request all throughout the budget season of having a spreadsheet to see where we're at, when they, when they have to renew. Again, is this it?
Yeah.
Is this it for the self-contained breathing apparatus?
My understanding is that this is, this will close SCBA books until, until these things start to age out, which is, I believe, 10 years, maybe, maybe longer, but I believe it's 10.
Again, I'm still staying in my request that yesterday came in here during budget season, pacified me, but I would like to see a spreadsheet. So who's ever sitting in these chairs, who's over for the Board of Finance, five years, 10 years down the road, they can plan for it. Because right now, we aren't being, I don't think we're being physically responsible for planning, because we bought them all now, and in 10 years, you have to go through it all again. And if we don't start putting some money away, try to put some money away, 10 years, we aren't gonna have the ARPA money, and it's gonna be harder to replace them for whoever's sitting in these chairs.
Well, no, that's, that's actually, there's two good points in what you just said, and I agree with what you, with your sentiment, and also the second point. We have, with that spreadsheet of their costs of things that age out, like their turnout gear. The trucks, obviously, we've got that list. But things like these packs would also be good. To have those, we've got a running list of where we are, what our plan is, and then whoever is sitting at these tables 10 years from now will be able to say, hey, this is exactly what you just said. This is where we are, we've got a plan for this. We have our new capital fund that we can actually start if we are inclined, or if the town is inclined, every budget season, throw in $10,000 every year into that to save for the next time we have to purchase.
Sort of like what we did with the reevaluation. Put money away leading up to it, so we aren't hit all at one time.
Yep, exactly. So that, I think, is exactly what you said, and we should continue to push for, for that spreadsheet, and I'll make a point of doing that in our, at their monthly commissioner meetings, to push for that. So in order to do that purchase, we, I spoke with Dime Bank, and they're looking into interest rates and terms and that kind of thing. The money, the money were very sound, and there's not gonna be any problem with us borrowing that money. But we gotta find out what the rates are, and what the, how long the term is going to go. So we have a resolution here that spells it all out for if we want to move it to a town meeting. If we agree to move it to the Board of Finance, Board of Finance will then move it to a town meeting, or we'll, we'll set a date, and we can talk about whether we want to put this on August 8 with the appointments, or whether we want to stretch it out and have some more conversation about it. Wait to hear back from the bank about what the exact rates are going to be and things like that.
Well, do we want to hold for right now until the Board of Finance tonight?
I think that we, we, I would recommend that we bring it to the Board of Finance.
To discuss.
We hold our meeting in session, you know, just do, what do you call it, table our meeting for a bit, open back up again when they're open, and continue the conversation as a larger group. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, and see. See what they have to say.
Any other thoughts on that?
No, again, I just, I'm not gonna come off my horse if I have the spreadsheets.
Yeah, no, you shouldn't, you shouldn't.
I support it all, again, I support the public safety aspect of it, but it's a simple spreadsheet. It's not too hard.
No, it's not, and it will be very valuable to us, so that's something we'll continue to push for. Before we close, though, there was one other thing that I wanted to add to the agenda, and it's slipping my mind.
Chester Electronics.
Chester Electronics, yeah, yeah, yeah. Could you add?
Two. Chester with the landfill?
Yeah, yeah, not the landfill, but the transfer stations. So if, I'm gonna make a motion that we add a conversation regarding Chester's interest in increasing their use at the landfill, or the, at the transfer station. I'll second. Okay, all those in favor? All right, we got a call a couple of weeks ago, actually, that sent it, it was more than a couple of weeks ago, about whether or not Chester residents could use the recycling for the electronics, you know, the old TVs, the old computer, computers and things like that. Right now, the contract is not allowed for that. I told them that I would, we would talk to them about it at the Board of Selectment's As far as that goes, the only detrimental thing that I see with that is it adds traffic at the transfer station. For recycling, we actually make money, we get paid for the stuff that comes out of that trailer. So it's not a lot, but it is something. If we increase with that, it'll increase the funds. So I'm not, I actually think that sharing up there is a benefit for both towns.
What do they currently do, you know?
What do they do? I think the people just take them to the regional recycling, you know, that's hazardous, hazardous, I don't know, I don't know what they, I didn't ask them what they do. I don't, I don't know.
I'm just curious if they, if they dispose them themselves?
They, no, they're individual citizens, they're kicking their hair, that much, I don't know, whether they throw it in their garbage to get taken, you know, illegally to the trunk, or whether they take the responsible, which I don't really even know what the responsible thing to do with a computer, smash it up, and smash up the hard drive, and take it to some recycling, I guess maybe that's hazardous, do you know? It's hazardous waste, because of the recyclable metals in there. In any case, I don't know what you think about sharing that service.
I have no problem sharing, again, if it's, if we have a set figure where we're making a couple dollars on it, it's all about the money.
We definitely.
And it's about recycling, too. I mean, it's, if they're just smashing them and going to landfills, I mean, it's not what we're about.
Well, that's what, I don't know what the individuals are doing, but given this opportunity, they will be using this, it'll probably mean that take two has to come empty the trailer more often, but that's, that's on an as-needed basis anyway, they don't come until it's pulled.
And how would we come up with a figure?
We wouldn't, it was, what I suggested to, to the first select woman is that we just added to the contract, any income that comes out of it is Deep Rivers, and she agreed to that. So I don't know how much it will get used, I don't know what that increase will add up to, but it will stay in Deep Rivers accounts.
I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
All right, let me, I'm gonna look into how that, what that process is, we have to go to the town, we'll look for a second to make that, but given that, I'll look into how we do it, and we can talk about it again.
Do we have, do we have to go to the town for the brush?
We did for the brush, but that was, I think.
That was a contract already?
Yeah, that, yeah, that was, that was a change to the contract. This will be, too, and I'm not sure that we needed to go to the town for that, but that was, that was a much larger impact, and I thought it was best to go to the town. For this, we may need to go to the town, but I'm not sure, I'm gonna look into it.
While we're going through all the steps now, is there anything else they want to?
Yeah, no, they want to use it.
Instead of keep going back to the town, I'd rather make one shot and say, here, this is what Chester likes to do, they're gonna pay us X. Instead of, like you just said, town meeting, town meeting, town meeting, town meeting.
Yep, I don't know that there's not, there's not much left that they can't do, other than the food scraps and the compactor. And that might be a bigger conversation, it will be a bigger conversation, but I think it is something that I would, I would recommend the town look at, is that we actually contracted them to share the, to share half of the expense of using that, using all the facilities at the transfer station, and paying accordingly for all of that, you know, so we would, in my, in my thinking, share the cost of the transfer station right down the middle. That includes populating with the staff, that includes the hauling, that includes every bit of.
Everything that we put money there.
Now, I don't, I think that part of this would be, if we did that, I think we probably would, would have to increase the capacity of the compactor. I don't know that for sure. I know for sure we would have to buy a couple more containers, because we switch that out now, once a week at least. So the two compactors are just, the two containers are just enough for us to haul on Mondays. So that, I believe, is the last one, but we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
Just again, while we're going to town.
I'll look into what's left for them to do, and if it is that, I know very well that the current board of selectmen over there would very much like to just, not regionalize it, but put it all together and share that, and share the cost. And I think that, that might, might go a long ways. You know, we share an awful lot between the towns now. Deep River seems to provide quite a bit as far as the sweeping and some of the other things that we provide for. But it goes both ways mutually with the police, mutually with the fire.
I think in the beginning, the first year would be tough to budget, because you have no idea what the increase would be. So again, if we're getting rid of, say, 100 ton a year, so, and they bring in 40 ton, so we wouldn't know until actually.
We won't know until we get in there. But I think we plan for population, you know, whatever their population is. You know, the first year probably won't be that much, because they've, they've got contracts already with their haulers, they have to haul. So I don't know, I don't know how tight those contracts are. But, you know, it's a longer conversation, and I think it's, I think it's something that would be good for, both towns would benefit from. All right, well, we'll continue that one until the, until the next meeting. So item five is tabled. Rather than vote to adjourn, let's vote to pause the meeting for, until we reopen again.
I'll make a motion to suspend a meeting at 6:52.
I'll second that. Aye.
Good evening, it is July 25, and it's the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. First item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 27. A move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye. Next item is audience of citizens, come one and come all. Carol, do you wish to say anything, is our citizen representative, so with that in mind? The next item would be Tom. Did Tom leave messages with anyone? I see his sheet here.
He wasn't able to attend, so I passed out his sheet.
And that is wise, that is a wise thing to do. Certainly July is the, is our principal tax collecting time, and seems to me I have contacts, I should have had a better understanding. The last contact I had was last week, that monies were coming in about equal to last year, so I took comfort. Did you get the same message, Angus, if you had more updates on?
I haven't, it's been a busy town hall.
Sure, it's been busy. I guess since we have, we collect taxes, it's about $15 million a year, seven seems right, although next week, there's a great rush to pay early. There are some people who are very committed to paying their bills on time, then there's a lull, and then there's a great rush to pay at the end. There are those who are trained to pay as late as possible, so I expect we will see more. Other than I think things are coming, are fine, I have nothing more to add. Although I do notice that interest rates at Liberty are 3.5.
And he closed, I don't know, did he talk about this last time? He closed the Essex Savings Bank account.
Oh, he moved it to, oh, I see, that says closed, okay.
Fund, what do all the NAs mean in his report? Not available?
No interest.
Not applicable, I assume, but yes, has no interest earned on those accounts. If you glance over, you can see the names of them, they're relatively small.
But there's two citizens ones, for WPCA memorial fund account? Those are significant enough to look at maybe putting them into.
The WPCA, I'm in agreement on that, you wouldn't wonder why. WPCA pays us to manage their fund, so yes. What do we have for a balance in WPCA? I think his ration, I, and we should not answer, his ration, that is a fund that funds, dollars come into constantly and go out constantly, and I think he's concerned about putting it somewhere and not having the ability to get to it, but.
Well, I think that may be something that we could talk about at the next meeting.
Because even checking pays a little bit of interest now.
An excellent point. Yes, all right, I do not know much more to say. Which then brings us to selectmen recommendation, Angus?
Yeah, and let's just make sure we come back into session, so at whatever time it is, 6, 7:30?
7:35.
Okay, so we're back in session. Let's see, a couple of different things. The first one, I think, will be recommendation of the selectmen, second one we'll talk about later on, right, with the roads. But at our, at our meeting, we had a conversation regarding a possible borrow to, 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 to build up some of our, some of our infrastructure, really, but what we talked about is we need a sweeper, we, you know, on our capital improvement plan, the sweeper has been on that for quite a few years, but we've been keeping it moving, keeping it going. It's gotten to the point now, oops, Jody's here.
Who was it?
Just said Jody. So I admitted Jody, Jody's now here. She don't know, look at me, so I'm gonna put her over there. You guys have someone here. So that, we're now, we're fixing this 50% of the time. If we go out for a week, we can't get a week straight, we go two days, spend a day repairing it, maybe two days repairing it, and then coming back. So it's, it's time for a new one. That was bought, used back in 1994, I think. That's a cost of about $320,000, the two proposals we've gotten, that's the better of them. Next thing we've been talking about for a little bit is a wood chipper. The town crew needs a wood chipper. That's a $100,000 cost. If you remember, our accountants were here, and they've recommended that we upgrade our accounting hardware. We have a couple of different recommendations for that, one of which is with the BMSI that we are still, that we're working with now, that group was just purchased, and they're doing, we are on their list to upgrade anyway. That's a couple of months down the road. Either, either way, we're recommending $50,000 for that, based on the information that we have thus far. And the SCBA, if, go ahead.
What's the other recommendation? You said we have two options.
Three different, three different companies. One is BMSI, and two, the other two, I don't know. BMSI seems to be the one that I'm recommending, based on conversations with Chester and O-line. The fire department, if you remember, they came to us, we gave them a bunch of money last year, and the year before that, for the SCBA tanks. They came back and asked for more, and we said no. But they have got, if with another $30,000, they will complete the purchase of all of the SCBA tanks that we need for the next 10 years, or whatever the length of the lifespan is. So on, the board of selectmen is, or at least opening for conversation, that purchase, which is about a $340,000, no, sorry, $540,000 borrow. We talked to Dime Bank, which is who we've done a lot of our work with, they have not gotten back to me yet with interest rates, but we wanted to raise the conversation, get everyone thinking about it. I'd like to move it to a town meeting, but I'm not quite sure that we're ready to do that without, without better concept of the terms. But I'd like to get us talking about it, get us thinking about it, I know Duane's got some thoughts on it, so, whatever you guys, what do you guys think?
I have a question on the sweeper. I know we, I remember speaking relative to providing services to Chester. So there's some income coming from that, have they thought about doing a regionalization or some type of shared equipment between the town and Chester, Essex and Deep River, so that we wouldn't have to incur all that expense ourselves?
Essex has their own sweeper, good question, and something that we've talked about, Essex has their own, and they don't want to share it, I talked with them about that two or three years ago. And I'll tell you why they don't want to share it, and I think the same reason that a lot of towns don't share, share equipment, that do like we do and actually provide the services. If you share the cost of it, you know, yes, we can go through in the sign up and the checklist, but I think Mike could probably talk to this, why we don't share police cars, because you get out of it, it's working fine, the next guy gets in it and it's not working, you know, all this kind of thing, and between towns, it doesn't work. For our, for our. For our, um, for our purposes though, it does, we just raised our cost, or what we charge Chester, right, up to twenty-one, I think twenty-one thousand five hundred is what we get for sweeping their streets once. And then we, when we go back, if they have a big event, they want Main Street swept, we go back and charge them an hourly rate for that. So that, that's the income that it produces. But, you know, I like to get out and sweep our streets three times a year. And, um, with this repair, consistent repairing, we just, uh, we're not getting it, we're not getting that done, um, efficiently. And it, it's just, it's time for us to buy a new one. I think this, this is the way to do that, is through this borrow. The chipper is something that our crew has needed for quite a long time, we've been talking about it now actively for a couple of years. And that, again, that just comes into, really public safety, it gets, if a tree comes down, our crew can get out there and get it off the road, and get it entirely off the road without filling it, filling a truck up with branches, dropping, going, dropping off, trying to get, you know, the machinery in the street, all that kind of thing. The accounting hardware we need to do, that, that's, we have to do that, whether we borrow for it as part of this, or whether we, um, take it out of our capital expenditures or something like that, but I, I think this is a good opportunity for us. And SCBA, I, I think it'd be nice to get that behind us and, and be, be all set, as far as, uh, not having to talk about it, or, or listen to a request for it, again.
Some of these things were in the ARPA funds. Where are they at?
The, the sweeper was in the ARPA funds, but, um, given that we're going to invest in a borrow for the sweeper, or certainly wanna do that with the sweeper, the chipper, um, we're, we've got requests for about six or seven hundred thousand dollars worth of requests, and we only have three hundred thousand dollars left. So I think taking the chipper out of the ARPA funds, using borrowing for that, is an appropriate, um, way to fund a piece of equipment, a piece of our infrastructure. It's gonna, the chipper will have a lifespan of, I don't know, twenty or thirty years. You pay for it over the time of that loan, that's really the way that, I, I think we should be, um, funding.
That's buying new.
Yeah, yeah.
But should we wait to make decisions on these until we know how else we're gonna spend the rest of the three hundred thousand dollars?
I don't think so, no, I don't think we should, at all. I, I think those are, these should be kept separate. The, uh, the SCBA, we already did fund through ARPA. The only thing in here that's, that is listed on our ARPA request is the town's request for the chipper. And I think it's, and, and given feedback that we had during a couple of meetings and some other conversations, um, I think that the chipper would be better funded through this borrow than through the ARPA funds.
Mr. Jackie Flynn, when would you be making final recommendation decisions on?
I had actually hoped to do that tonight, but we just, I, I, we didn't. Um, we're not quite ready to bring that stuff back, I'd like to do that at your next meeting, just try to move that forward.
I've got a couple of questions Angus, the old street sweeper, what happens to that? Is it sold, sold for parts, does it, do you keep it as a spare?
No, I, I don't think there's any, there's, there's no, there's no parts in that that are, that are gonna be any value to a new machine, that's thirty, thirty-year-old machine.
Right, does it go to calamaries, scrap?
Well, that's, that's what the conversation is, I don't know what the, uh, what the value is.
Sell to Chester.
Sell to Chester. Oh, there was one value here.
So it'll probably be sold.
I think it'll be sold for scrap or so, or whatever, if we can, if we can get something for it, we certainly will. But we're even, we're struggling with that even with the, the fire trucks that we just replaced.
The old gym sweepers are getting obsolete.
Yeah, and, and we, last, it was new in ninety-four, so we've got to do pennies worth of it.
Oh yeah, we've got more than our.
We can see that, and as far as the fire department's request, we're two, three weeks into the new budget, this fiscal year, that wasn't asked for.
It was asked for, and we took it out.
Okay, do, don't they have fifteen thousand dollars of discretionary ARPA money, take a footie towards that?
They actually, um, it's a good question, these discretionary ARPA money was used for key fobs for all of their buildings.
So what's more important, key fobs or Scott packs?
I think that the key fobs have been spent.
I think that's to answer that question itself, isn't it?
The sixty thousand dollars that we gave them, that was for Scott packs, forty, forty thousand of that was spent on Scott packs. They reconfigured how they needed, so they've got nineteen thousand left to buy two more Scott packs, which is what they're planning on doing. With another thirty, we can replace the three, the five that, that, that are left to be replaced.
They can't take it out of their budget for this year?
That, no, they don't have it in their budget for this year, we took it out of their budget for this year, if you remember, we talked about that, because we funded it with ARPA. We thought they didn't need to in their budget. Um, as we talk, as the date, as this goes on, um, this may or may not be, you know, something we wanna do, this doesn't, these have a ten-year lifespan, the borrow, it'd be, we'll be borrowing for the lifespan of the, of the machines, or the packs. Um, and if we don't wanna put this in there, then we don't have to, none, none of these are, are written in stone until we actually write the resolution. But I think that.
It's a safety issue.
It is a safety issue. We took it out of their budget because we used the ARPA money to supplement that, and our budget was tight this year. It is, you're, you're a hundred percent correct, this is only the beginning of the fiscal year. But, these are, all of these are things that we need to do.
I'm concerned though about the perception, I have to be honest, is, you know, I, I agree and I understand, but we just passed a budget, we took these things out of the budget, and now we're gonna go back to the town and say, and we're gonna charge it five percent interest, cause we're gonna borrow the money now, cause we really need them. That feels like we didn't do a good job with the budget.
Well, we don't need, we don't need to come to the town with the, uh, for the, if, if we're talking strictly about the SCBA area now, I'm not sure.
No, I was saying all four things, the whole bunch, is that we took it out of the budget.
Well, we didn't, we didn't take it out of the budget, the only thing we took out of the budget was the SCBA.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that we took out of the budget. The rest of this is in our capital improvement plan, or has been, has been talked about. We didn't bring the borrow to the town, um, because frankly, the, the beginning of the conversation about the borrow was the accounting hardware. And when the accountants actually gave us their recommendation, it was a hundred thousand dollar expense. We said, we don't, we're not gonna take that out of the budget, we'll borrow for that. And then, you know, we started thinking about, what do we need as well, right, why borrow just a hundred? We have, Bud can say this much more eloquently than I can, but we have lots of room for debt in our budget. We, we don't, we, our debt load is very low compared to other communities around the state of Connecticut and around the country, really. And this is, while, yes, it is, we did just do, we did just prepare a budget a few months ago. We're just starting this budget. These are things that we know we need, and, um, you're, you're right, there is a perception. But, we, we, we know we need to borrow for the, uh, accounting software. Why not make it a bigger borrow, grander borrow, and get, take care of some things that we know we need to do? And rather than wait until the next budget to do it.
Angus, quite a clarification for me and whoever's watching on television. What is the, what does the acronym stand for? I thought it was scuba tanks.
No, it is, it actually is, the same acronym for scuba, one, scuba's underwater, it's a.
Salt-contained breathing apparatus.
There you go.
But I thought they just bought a whole bunch of them.
They did.
So why do they need more?
Because they, they always needed more, would they have, would they have a, I think they have thirty? They are all aged out, they're aging out. They, we've been buying, if you remember over the budget seasons, we have been buying five every year, sixty thousand, sixty-seven. We just gave them ARPA money to buy five more.
Right.
They need five more to complete the set, and be all set, and not have to come back for SCBA equipment for another ten years.
And Adam explained that the meeting, they can have it.
No, that's only part of it.
That's only part of it.
That's only part of it. They need, they need to replace them anyway.
Okay.
What he was asking for, what his, the big push to keep it in the budget, was because the new equipment is not compatible with the old equipment. So if you're in there and your buddy needs the equipment, you can't, you can't just take, you know, share. That was not a concern for us, because they're very rarely, or all thirty at the same time, and they could do that. The concern for us was that we had just bought them some. This is an opportunity, if we're borrowing anyway, and we don't, we don't need to, um, I just think we should. If we, if we're borrowing anyway, let's put these in there, and then it will not impact next year's budget, except for in the, in the debt, which is something that we can take on, so.
That was my other question, you said we needed larger debt?
No, I didn't, I don't think I said we need, I don't think I said we need it, I said, I think we have lots of room for it.
Which means what, we should incur more debt?
Yeah.
Why?
Because that's, that's how municipalities generally fund their capital expenditures.
To have them pay off a debt?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, you've got assets that are gonna live for twenty years.
Yeah.
You're really, my thought is, you do not wanna take those, you don't wanna take, charge people that, that this year's taxes.
I don't care, I didn't understand what you just said, did you do say that?
You're going to have these trucks, uh, that live for twenty years. So why?
We certainly would not pay out.
We certainly would not ask, uh, taxpayers to pay for a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year, if it's gonna be used over ten years, twenty years. So we're going to borrow it, just the way we bought our house over long periods of time. Now Angus is then adding the accounting system, which also have a long life, and you get to an interesting part, when you have a, a borrow, should we just add ten thousand, twenty thousand more for the bottles, that's, I think what he's asking.
That's, that is the conversation.
So, if you're willing to accept that it's logical to finance large purchases like the, uh, which ones, go for, we got, sweeper.
The sweeper and the chipper.
And the chipper.
So how much does that increase your payback then? Is it considerable, when you're paying back its debt, or paying off its debt?
An excellent question, because we do not yet know the interest rate or the term, I don't know.
Right, we're, we're introducing the conversation tonight.
Could the borrow be like a line of credit, where you get approval at a fixed rate, and then that money could be parsed out over time? So that some of these are not purchased all at once, so you're only paying interest on those items that are purchased initially? Otherwise, you're, you're starting your initial interest rate from day one, say it's five hundred and forty thousand.
We can certainly look into that, we haven't, um.
I haven't had good luck on that very one, the other last one, we spent all the money from our last borrow.
Right, yeah.
Because you're paying interest on the five forty, you may not have purchased those items for six, eight, you, order a street sweeper may take you two years to get it.
Right, we'll purchase it, um, and have to put money down on it.
Right.
And then we'll get it back, what did we say, I think it was ten months, one was, one was said it would be about ten months before we got it.
And what are the, like, warranties and, you know, you, you, like, you buy a new car, there's peace of mind, you're paying car payment, you know that if something goes wrong, that it's taken care of by the manufacturer, what is a warranty on a sweeper, I have no idea.
I don't either, I hadn't, didn't look at that, I'm, I'm sure it's just like the same as his own fire.
There's a peace of mind too, you know, five years from now, we end up now having maintenance and repairs on a brand-new sweeper, that gets added to our budget expense.
Yes.
In addition to the interest and the debt.
I'm, go ahead.
The way I look at it, two, two things. With the sweeper, I look at it as a public safety also, for the sweeping the roads, for, for one. Secondly, I believe on all the money we have in our budget for the MS four cleaning the catch basins. So the more we sweep off the road, the less gonna with the catch basins, the less we're gonna need a, a vendor to suck out the catch base, clean catch basins. So it's actually a twofold, we, yes, we're spending money, but it's gonna save us, I think it's gonna save us money on the cleaning of the MS four that we have to do for the state. So the sweeper, I, you know, I.
And the sweeper is definitely, that machine is real.
You see, and you have to chug a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty important with the storms and stuff.
Yeah.
My, my question is, for the fire department again, these tanks, are they a want or a need?
They're a need.
Okay. Cause I'm still kinda confused getting key fobs with the money instead of replacing the.
No, that was part of, you know, we, we gave them sixty thousand for the SCBA. We decided you can use this for that, we gave them something for discretionary, they had asked for, um, they had asked for a number of different things, they asked for a lot more money than they got. Um, so we said, here's this, to use for this, whatever you wanted to do, and they chose to do that. Um, at the time that they made that choice, I will, I, I will say, they didn't recognize that we had removed the other, the other sixty thousand from their budget. So they were making these choices, not knowing that we had removed their, that money from their.
So they anticipated what their new budget was going to be, before the new budget was given to them?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If, if we all recall that we had the budget meeting upstairs, and we said, we gave them the, the money from the ARPA, and I believe Adam and Timmy assumed that the five extra tanks were in this year's budget.
Yeah.
Right, and then they weren't, and then they came back to the selectmen the following week looking for more. Again, I'm gonna stay on my high horse, my pet peeve, uh, I said earlier, I've asked for six months for a spreadsheet of where we're at, when we buy these products. And they gave me something there one meeting, and they took it back. So again, I, I just wanna know whether, I said earlier in the selectmen's meeting, all of us probably won't be here in ten years, or fifteen years, when they have to be replaced, but at least they have a piece of paper, who's ever sitting as the chairman or board, the first selectman, they know how to budget. Because again, we bought all these tanks now between the ARPA money and budget, and within the past couple of years, they're all gonna come due in ten or fifteen years, so the next people that are behind us have to go through what we're going through.
Plus there's still a vote from the town about the twenty-seven thousand dollars for the tower truck repair that still has to happen, correct?
That passed.
So shouldn't part of this be contingent on the fact that they produced what you've asked them to do? Because, I mean, everybody has a depreciation sheet, you know, any company is, when, you know, how long it depreciates, when you need to, I mean, I just think that's a minimum requirement before we start spending more money.
To what Jackie have them?
So, then you know what their equipment is, when it comes to, and when they need to buy more.
It's their own capital plan.
So it's their own capital plan, we don't have a copy of that, so that we, if we're gonna continue to give money, and now we're gonna borrow to do it, is that we should have a copy of that capital plan, so we can plan going forward. Cause that's only, I mean, it's the most fiscally responsible thing to do.
Did you keep a copy of that, or?
No, they took it back.
That was a spreadsheet, they do have a capital improvement plan.
They showed me a spreadsheet.
Problem with their correct capital plan is.
And that's why I'm upset, again, just show, give us a piece of paper that we know, because next January, when we start budgeting again, if we're lucky to be at the table here, I don't want them to come and say, hey, we need five more.
Right.
If you show me a piece of paper that says, we have, we're fully funded now for all the packs, all the masks, we're good for ten years, show it to me.
I think that's important to have that for the trucks, their equipment, their packs, everything.
Be careful of accountability on the equipment, when it expires, when it's purchased, when you plan on replacing it, when you do it all at once, or you plan on staging it over two or three fiscal years, that's just being transparent and.
That's all that I'm asking for. You know, I support them, but again, I, I wanna see.
That's what we wait for.
I wanna see.
I think it's different from, it's different, they do have a capital improvement plan, that they submit every year with their budget.
That's not, that's not.
That's not what you're talking about right now, you're talking about just a list with, of what they have in inventory.
And the expected life, expected, the turnoff period, the CBAs.
And where are they at, and all that different equipment, in three years, do you have to start replacing it, or thinking about it, or whatever, but that would be helpful, they have one here.
And that's what I said in the selectmen's meeting, when we had our reevaluation there, we put money away, leading up to reevaluation. So maybe we can start putting five thousand, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars away, so in ten years, when they have to replace it, we aren't getting hit all at once. That's just my, my thinking.
That's a fair ask.
Absolutely.
Do we know the lifespan of a wood chipper? Anybody?
Depending on who uses it, I guess.
Yeah.
I think it depends, you know, the, the ones that I used to rent from Deep River Renta, look pretty old.
Yeah, is it, is it ten years?
Often, more than ten years.
Every set is ten, I would say twenty.
But if you make the assumption that it's ten or twenty, at least you know.
Can the old one be kept as a spare?
We do not have one, we have.
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to break this out categorically, right? Cause like, I look at those, the SCBA equipment, that's, that's at the term of your borrow, right? So, that's gonna be done when you're paying it off. And then you got your accounting hardware, which typically ten years for that kind of thing is a long time.
Yeah.
That's probably, you, you could borrow fifty K for that and be looking to replace it in like five years.
Probably.
So that's below that, so. You know, when I look at that, I see like four twenty in term borrow type stuff. And then the other stuff is like, that's more short term.
Uh huh.
So you may want to categorize that a little differently and pull that out.
Yeah, well, that's, that's part of why we're in the conversation.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the way I would look at it. I mean, cause it, you know, the first two I look at and say, okay, arguably that's capital borrow.
Yeah.
And the other two I look at and I say, that's more, you know, you want one, if you want to call this SCBA capital borrow, but it's at the term of your borrow. So.
I don't think you need to get that information.
You might want to just think about that financially more.
Can we, the next question I have is can, instead of putting three hundred thousand back because we were okay with less than three hundred thousand, two months ago we passed the budget, um, is could we buy the, um, software, the hardware, whatever it is for finance out of that and just put two fifty in? From your email the other day. Yep, you said that, um.
My surplus estimate?
Yeah, your surplus, that you thought we could put three hundred thousand, did I read that right? Three hundred thousand back.
To bring it up to twelve percent?
To bring it up to twelve percent. So instead of twelve, can we make it eleven? Since we were okay with ten percent and pay for the software, hardware, whatever it is for the financial stuff with that. Only because as you say, we're going to be paying off on it long after it's outdated.
For something after it's already gone, right?
Right.
Yeah. We're uncomfortable with like. Whatever a term is, the age of the asset.
That, and then.
And we had that conversation, but I think, I think the SCBA can and should be in there. I, I do think that. Um, it, it's going to last as long as the borrow, we're not going to borrow this for twenty years. I think we're going to borrow this for ten.
We couldn't get, when did we get last time?
Yeah, I think it was seven, right?
Seven and a half. I think it was very difficult to get that far out.
Yeah.
So I think we're okay, but I don't know, I don't know what the terms will get and the, and after. And it is, what is in there is, is critical.
Yeah, you need to know the term, right? Because you don't want to be paying on something after it's already gone and then you're on the next round.
Right, and, and that's.
Correct. That's my concern.
Those, and that's, that's, that's right. I agree with you on that. We talked about that.
Right.
Um, while we were going through the process of what we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
But the life expectancy of a chipper and a sweeper are twenty plus years.
I didn't know about the wood chipper and the street sweeper.
If we were using a wood chipper daily like a, a tree, you know.
Five years.
Right, but the amount that we're going to use it, um, I would say twenty plus.
Right, okay.
If it's taken care of like anything.
Yep, but the, the bottom two, I don't see that.
No.
There, one's at term maybe, and then the other one's probably less.
Well, I don't have any problem going back to the town and asking to take money out of the reserve. I, I, you said we were okay with ten percent. I think you guys were okay with ten percent. I'm not, I think twelve or thirteen is where we should be. But, you know, that's, that's a conversation that will come up later on in the day.
I'm uncomfortable with ten. I was uncomfortable with ten because I knew we were in surplus coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
All right? Um, I encourage you to think back, how many times have we relied upon our surplus? We've taken comfort by having our surplus. Here is a thing, we'll call it an asset, that has a long life. Why don't we pay for it over its life rather than taking cash today? It's my thoughts.
Yeah.
And to Angus's point, we have current, as a town, of long-term borrowings of five point eight million dollars, of which a little over four is for the suburbs, which have a twenty-year life or something like that. State of Connecticut limits town to seven times their revenues. Let's say we have fifteen, we can borrow up to a hundred and five million dollars. Um, we've got plenty of, um, that's why I think we have, it's an asset, it's some flexibility we have to spread over payments over a long period of time. Rather than this, in town, people pay a hundred thousand dollars a month right now. That's my thought.
Yeah.
But the advantage of debt is.
Yeah. And that, those, that's my thought too. That's why we're here talking about it.
And although interest rates will be higher, I mean, remember, we're tax exempt, so interest rates are sitting out there. We are going to not pay that much. So we'll come in. I don't know, I have no idea what will come in.
No, we'll see. I, you know, I'm waiting to hear back from the bankers for what the interest rate's going to be.
So the five hundred and forty thousand dollar borrower would be for a sweeper, a wood chipper? The scoop, uh, scoop tax?
Scoob again, yeah, the scuba tax.
And the accounting system?
Yeah. And the issuance costs.
And the issuance costs, right.
The what costs?
The costs of the attorneys and the banks fees and all that kind of stuff.
To what say the front book, can we, can we encourage Angus to go out and start looking around? I talked to banks last time. I don't think we have enough information to ask you to allow, to send this to a board.
Right, and I agree with that.
Which would mean that we would meet either in person in August or in person or on Zoom. We would have much more information. Or is anyone uncomfortable, comfortable with taking large assets and financing them over a long period of time?
I wouldn't borrow for an asset that's going to terminate prior to you paying it down.
Absolutely.
That's my, the, the first two I'd.
And the brief conversation we're having is.
The second two.
Each one of those assets will have a life longer than ten.
For the first two.
Except the scuba.
The scuba's ten.
Scuba's, scuba's at least ten, if maybe.
Ten?
Yeah, it's at least ten.
The next, I heard this on Angus, and also, I don't like financing something that will pass away and we keep paying for it, but yes.
The hard, the hard words.
Yes, the bonutism.
We'll revisit all that stuff before we move in.
Can we, can I go back to Dwayne's question? Is there a reason why we can't ask the, um?
No, we talked about it at the, we talked about that at the first selectmen's meeting. I'll, I'll ask him for that.
Before we.
I will tell him that we, we, in order for us to move forward on very much more, we're going to need something of that spreadsheet that they gave to Dwayne. It, it's valuable for us for two different reasons. Number one, so we can pay attention and be aware of whoever's around this table will be aware of where we are and where we're heading with that. But also because we can plan on how to fund it, whether do we want to pay ten thousand a year towards a purchase that we're going to buy ten years from now? And we do that with our rebound, we do it with some other things. I, I'm not, I'm, I'm just kind of in between on that, and I really do think that most things like that, like this, are better, we're better off. I don't want to ask the Bud's, to Bud's example, I don't want to ask the people today to pay for something that may or may not be here. They may or may not be here when they're actually making that purchase. So I'm not entirely sold on these sinking funds, if you will, that, that go towards a, for a future purchase.
And what was the anticipated cost of those tanks? Thirty thousand dollars?
It'd be another thirty, twenty-seven, eight or something like that.
How many tanks is that going to purchase?
That'll purchase three.
Three?
Yeah.
And then that's it? They're done?
And that's it? They're done? They're going to use?
It just seems like there's an increase coming back for more.
No, they, Dwayne and I were on the telephone with the deputy chief today, and he said, that's it, we're done. Until they age out, so ten years from now, so. You youngsters that are still on the road.
Which ties into the spreadsheet.
Right, because none of us may be here in ten years from now.
Right.
Angus, do you know what the funds cost for?
I do not, no.
That was part of their ARPA money?
That was, I, yes, as far as I know, they used that for that. I'm not a hundred percent certain of that.
All right. We're going to send Angus and I will, I will make some calls too. In interest rates?
Yeah.
Hundred, in the range of five hundred and fifty is the number.
Five forty is the number that we.
Five forty, we're still uncertain on some of the issuance costs, so five forty, we're going to ask banks.
No, that includes the issuance cost.
Does it? Okay, you comfortable with it? Okay, five forty, uh, a long period of time. It exists somewhere around ten years to get into this asset lifetime thing. So we'll begin to collect data, uh, and we'll let you know, we'll have a special meeting in most likely August or when we get this information.
Well, when I get the information, I'll let you know. You guys can at least have the information and we can decide if we want, if you need to move it forward or not.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask another question? Can you, since you don't really like my idea, um, borrow from that three hundred thousand and pay it back once you? Cause I'm just thinking about this financial system. It seems like it needs to be done sooner than later.
I would, I would think it should be.
Um, and by the time you figure all this out, we have a meeting, we're talking another two months before you get the money. And I was just thinking, can you not borrow from your surplus and then pay it back to?
Which is what we did to the last one.
Yes.
We, in order to do that, we need to go to a town meeting to make that borrow. Um, and I'm comfortable doing that. Or I was comfortable doing that when we did it, but we kind of knew that that borrow was coming, you know, we knew the outcome of that. I'm not as com, I'm not as comfortable doing that, um, for this. If we, if we know the outcome coming, then yes, I think that's borrowing from the, actually, no, we didn't, we had arranged for the borrow. We just didn't have the money and we needed to move, so we took the money out of the surplus, knowing that we'd already been confirmed.
The town had approved the borrowing as part of the budget.
Yeah.
So we moved and reversed ourselves.
So, yeah.
So if you're concerned that the town could say no to this, I still, you know, like I appreciate that all four things are really important. But it seems like the financial piece is the most important because we've been cited by our auditors as we need to upgrade this. So it just seems like no matter the cost, we've got to spend that money.
That was the impetus for all of this, you know, rather than putting it into later budgets, we said, well, we're going to have to, if, when it was a hundred thousand dollars just for the, some hardware, it's like, well, that's, that's crazy. We should borrow that. And whether we could borrow it in short term or not, um, and we started talking about, well, we need a chipper, we need, we need a sweep, we definitely need a sweeper. Um, let's, let's get a big borrow and consolidate all of it. And that's why, that's what got us here today. I would like to do it sooner rather than later. That's why we're talking about it today when we, you know, I had hoped that we would have some of these terms um, by the end of the day, but we didn't, so we'll.
But you could potentially parse out two different loans, right? So you could do the two larger, under one borrow at a certain interest rate, and then the one which has a shorter lifespan, maybe at a, cause usually the longer the interest rate, or the longer the term, the higher the interest rate.
Uh huh.
So if you've got like the hardware for the accounting department on a shorter term, you're going to pay less interest on that borrowed money. And then the life cycle is much shorter. I know it's a little more complicated, but it's, in the end, the economics are going to show that saves some money.
Well, it's something we can look into. I hadn't, I hadn't thought about, I had, really hadn't thought about doing that, um, just given the costs of the closings and all that kind of stuff.
My, my crazy brain thinking, and you and I have talked about this, and originally when we talked about the solar coming in, remember, we're going to be getting forty-two, almost forty-three thousand dollars a year for the solar for twenty years. You could use some of that money to pay this loan off.
When is that coming in? Do you pay early?
They're in the process of going, getting their siting council approvals. They've been out there, they surveyed it, they did the core samples. It's just, I, I would hope that it's going to be done sometime in the next few, I would say six months, but I, I don't know that for sure.
And core samples means that there's also a possibility that, that those samples could be used?
No, 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 they're just drilling down to see what, what is underneath there so that they can support this. They're just doing the engineering of how to support the things, not, they're not, they're not testing to see what's there.
No.
So, you know, they're testing to see.
But if it's not sound ground, they're not going to be able to use it?
No, they, it.
There's different methods.
There's different methods. They'll put a, rather than put it on piles, they'll put it as, or a slab underneath it or something like that. They'll be able to do it. They're, they're confident they're going to do it.
All right. Minor story, my, uh, my smoke detectors, I did not realize smoke detectors passed away after ten years.
Yes, good job.
So one night, one morning, uh, the smoke detectors all went off. We called the fire, my wife called the fire alarm, and they all showed up with these heavy coats and scuba packs. I appreciate the scuba pack advertisement, but I'm not sure if you need it for the fire alarm, but anyhow, they use it as an advertisement.
You know, that is, that, Dwayne's point is something that we didn't do when we, uh, when we made the agreement and signed the contracts for the solar. But, you know, it's a total of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the course of twenty years. So it, it can be dedicated towards, you know, a, an expense. That revenue could be dedicated towards an expense rather than just going into the general fund, which is where it's going now. So, you know, that's something I think.
That was my thought from, from day one, because I didn't want to just see that forty-seven thousand just get thrown into the.
Into the general fund.
Yeah, right. Use it for something and you can say, hey, we bought this sweeper because of the solar, we bought this. You know, at least you have an asset that you purchased from that.
Yeah.
So your eighty-two thousand dollars a year would pay for almost all the sweeper for that year? And you just need to add that small amount, what, twenty thousand dollars, and to take it out of our, our budget?
I lost on that one.
The eighty-two thousand dollars for the solar panels.
Forty, forty-two thousand dollars a year.
Oh, forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand for a total of eight hundred and forty or eight hundred and fifty over a twenty-year period. But even that, we're talking five hundred and fifty, five hundred and forty thousand here, where if we were set up and the solar panels were already generating the money, it's an easy.
It's a wash.
It's a wash. Actually, we're making money. So that's, was my train of thought, to use the money that we're getting for leasing our property and buy a nice asset. To say, okay, this is what we have.
Right.
And you don't have to borrow it.
We don't have to borrow it.
No, if, if we were already up, up and going. Yes, you would have to borrow it, but.
No, we would borrow.
We would borrow, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to add that debt onto our budget because we're getting forty-two thousand from the solar.
And you have said that for a while. I, I'm uncomfortable with identifying a stream to a stream going out. By the time it hits that general fund, if it comes in as green dollars, it goes out as, I don't know. But we've got a long way until we get to there, so. So, good. All right, now, with all those numbers that we started, uh, last meeting, Angus and I had done a preliminary estimate of surplus based on end of April numbers, and I was giving you that I felt relatively comfortable and very conservative, saying we would have a surplus of about five hundred. Angus and I have continued with better numbers. I suggest to you, we'll have a surplus now of seven fifty, eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, based on Angus and my estimate, you know, you should not forget that, all right? But until we get the accountants in to do the audit, it is still Angus and my estimate. But what we chatted last month, would you be willing to accept the magnitude of that and commit a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand so that Angus can go out and improve the roads?
I think it's a good investment. It's a, we have an opportunity, and, and I really want to stress, this is not an under expenditure or over taxation. This is just an amazing amount of revenue this year that we.
Almost all of this is true, but revenues that we did not budget.
There's no way you could budget for a hundred thousand dollars.
Our expenses are virtually less than one percent of what the actual budget is, so it's all driven by.
Yeah.
Clarify, Bud, you, in your email, you said we have eight hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Which I expect that's correct.
Okay, and so three hundred goes back to surplus to bring us to twelve percent, and one fifty for roads. What happens to the other almost four hundred thousand?
The surplus.
So then it'll be more than twelve percent?
Yes.
So I go back to, can we buy the financial system with fifty thousand?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a philosophical, that's a philosophical question, right? That's what we were just talking about. Do we want to buy something that's going to last twenty years with the cash that we have today? And, and I don't. I think that we're better off paying that off over time.
You think the financial system will last twenty years? I just heard maybe.
No, the financial system, I don't.
I would buy the bottom two. I would take the, I'd take the eighty grand out and.
Well, that's, 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 that's.
It's an excellent question. Okay, we'll find out a little bit better. That is an excellent one. If we have surplus, and John's point is good, things don't last as long. If we have surplus, and John's point is good, things don't last as long in today's world.
And then SCBA's seem to have a certain transient lifetime that I'm not sure that they're exactly...
Everything has shortened up the lives with technology.
It would be good to see a spreadsheet.
That's a good point, excellent question.
No, that's a good question.
Very good question, because they don't last really ten years. Maybe they're only seven years.
Well, if it gets damaged or something like that.
Correct, right, and we need replacements.
And we're the world of accounting, so we got a better way of doing it, which is more likely.
Three of them, three of them lasting ten years from now, you know, the odds on it?
Yeah, good point, Jim, good point.
Well, I think they generally have in the past, and at least in my limited experience, we haven't come back and said, hey, we need...
The average life, that's correct, that's correct. Very good, excellent.
I think we have to, one of the things we have to think about that, we borrowed quite a bit of our surplus to keep our...
Budget.
Budget below a mil. So there's about seven hundred thousand there that we borrowed out that we've gotta put back into there, as you said. We also, remember, we talked about it briefly last month, we can anticipate an unanticipated expense at the elementary school of about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we're gonna need to come up with. So that, we want, we want to make sure that we keep that.
And what's that for?
It's an unexpected, it's an outplacement.
Then they'll come back to us and ask us. They're doing their best, say, to use, to find savings, but they will...
Yeah, but that doesn't, yeah. I would not take any comfort in that at all. I think we're gonna need to go to the town and ask for an additional hundred and thirty. And that's, that's okay, that's what happens, that's what happens. But that's another reason why twelve to thirteen percent is where we want to be. So we've got that for these unanticipated mandatory expenses. That's not something that we can talk about, we have got to pay.
And maybe contributor, I haven't quite processed this. All the grants that we have gotten, we have to fund.
Yep, we have to fund.
And are reimbursed. So when I add up all the surplus, it does not consider fact that we're putting the money out first before we get the money back. So there's some cash flow issue. That's why it is better to have a comfortable surplus rather than a...
Right. But I would like to, and if we're gonna meet again, we don't need to decide it now, but we're getting, we're getting our bid. I expect our bids on roads to be this, this week.
Okay, okay.
So I'll know whether that's a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five to finish Union Street or something like that, you know, to get that done. So that we're not doing that in pieces, we can just do it.
Okay, so we will do that in August as well?
Get started in Essex. Yeah, I think we can. And then we can just bring it to the town with one meeting.
So that's only gonna do one road, a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
It depends on the road, but yes, more than likely. Like, if I, I'm looking at Union Street because we did some drainage work up there. And in the course of doing that, I noticed that the center line of that road, the seam of that road is in really bad shape. And it's, we're repairing it more and more. So that's a good, a good street to just do. And that probably, that is about a hundred thousand dollars to go from where we've stopped to Spring, I think it is. So if we do that, then we're in, you know, it's a good use of that money. That road is done from the town line down to, down to Spring. We could also piecemeal it out for little pieces here, little pieces there. But on our list of roads, that is one of the bigger ones that we should get done. You know, I'd like to, I'd like to get finished with River Road and get, and start coming up Essex Street.
Oh, no, don't bother. Leave it, Bobby.
Yeah.
It's driving there so bad. Basically, it's so bad.
But we can read yellow lines if that's part of their highway budget.
No, it is.
You can't see where you're going at night with that fog.
It is. We did, we did lines last year for all the roads that have been paved in the last three or four years. And it is our intent to go back every year and do everything that gets paved, plus whatever needs to get done.
Come on, where, where you say you can't see?
Can't see, yeah. There's no guideline from, like, where the curve is on River Road going up the hill, the line stops. And when it's foggy, you can't see the damn road.
Do you have lights on River Road? I mean, do you have...
One near, one there. Not many.
I had caught myself riding my bike on River Road during the fall. And it gets pretty dark up there. Excellent.
But a quick question, you brought up getting ringers for putting money up for them. Did we ever get a check on the fire truck?
Actually, I know the answer, I know the answer, but I'm not gonna answer.
No, that's the answer.
Oh, okay. So what is the timeline for that check to typically be paid?
Well, I think about eight months ago would have been good.
That's heavily discounted as well, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you discuss it with them, or is it just something you...
On occasion, we discuss it with them. They wanted to, the last time we had the conversation, they wanted to pay that directly to the company that's manufacturing the truck when it got, when some, one stage got done. And I told them that that's, that's not legal, that they have to give it to us.
So how does that impact our cash flow when you look at our balance sheet?
It doesn't. We'll get the money from them when, when the truck is, at some point. We'll continue to pressure them for it, but...
Haven't we been making payments all night? I assume yes.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Well, we borrowed the money. We had, we haven't paid, we haven't paid it yet because they haven't given us the billion.
Maybe when we get that, we can buy the SCBA. Perhaps.
Well, I don't think it works quite that way.
Oh, it could. With fair money, perhaps, raise money on the solar, we can buy the rest, that's exactly.
It could work that way.
You guys are good.
John, I think I like.
One for one. Oh, what are they calling that, what's that?
Paying plan.
No, 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 when you ask for something in response, what did... What's that? When we accused Trump of doing it in...
Quid pro quo.
Quid pro quo. See how you learn these things and forget them so quickly? All right, so we're moving, we're nodding, we're giving facial nods to both of your questions so far.
Yeah, we'll ask, we'll, we'll get the information, provide that with you all, and then we'll ask you to come back in in August at some point, so we can move it. And we can adjourn our meeting because we're not gonna make any decisions. Second, all right.
This is as good a time as, we'll chat about where we are on our budget. But at the last meeting, I had forgot, Angus and I both sucking him and did this thing, to discuss the request by the police department to buy training guns. And I sent you memos, all right? And, and it came in, I forget, what choice, how much did it come in? Didn't come in much over budget, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars?
Eighty.
Eighty dollars over budget, but nevertheless, it's over budget. So I'm glad I chatted with you. But nevertheless, there seemed to be a lot of questions either on it specifically or the whole concept of the police department. I mean, and so I don't know where to go. Does anyone have any questions on the training guns or...
I think my question was in a mall forum, because I use them in my department quite a bit. Valuable training tool, one of the most valuable training tools law enforcement can use. My question was, do they belong to the town of Deep River or the Connecticut State Police?
They belong to the town.
Deep River, okay.
Definitely town of Deep River.
Yeah, there's no question about that.
And was the request submitted late?
No, I think he did his job submitting on time, because Angus and I forgot to deliver, to discuss.
Deliver the message to you guys, yeah. It was, it was really a matter of they were going to go, they were going to go over that line by a hundred bucks. It turned out to be eighty bucks. So we were really, it wasn't so much a request as it was to give you a heads up. The police budget, the whole line for police is well below, you know, their budget. They did not go over as in total, they went over in that line.
So they'd always planned to buy these last year?
It was really a heads up.
What did you say?
They'd always planned to buy these.
No.
No?
No, it was a...
This was not in his budget?
It was not, not in his budget as a planned item, that this is something that they wanted at the beginning of the fiscal year. Sometime about April.
At the end of the budgeting year?
He said this is a really good thing that we can, we can use. And we've got one of the great, best training officers around. We train quite a few different towns. And these are really, as Mike pointed out, these are really important training tools.
Are these the only two the town of Deep River have?
Yeah.
But again, question becomes, did you have questions that transcended training guns? Some of the questions we're getting into policy type stuff, which I'm resistant, that is our responsibility. But should, so the question becomes, should we do a joint meeting with, he is eager to come in and chat?
Well, yeah, Steve was, Steve was more than happy to come in and talk. But the questions that Bud pointed out to me, the conversation that started to talk about policy, I don't believe that the Board of Finance meetings, frankly, even just the Board of Selectmen meetings are the proper forum. I think we should call, if we're going to call a special meeting, we would call a special Board of Selectmen's meeting to discuss police policy in the town. And then have a town meeting, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a vote or anything like that. It would just be an informational meeting about these kind of things. But I don't, I don't think Board of Finance is the right forum for that. They're good questions, and shoot, just come on in and talk, you know, if you have...
I think it was just confusing because we're getting an email after the fact that they've already been approved. So I thought it was like maybe open discussion.
No, and that's something that...
Because usually, we have a discussion before. And it wasn't done that way, it was done after the fact. So that's why I think the discussion was done on that form, because it wasn't, wasn't really clear, what is it?
And we need to be careful on those conversations.
And he's correct, Angus and I could, should have initiated that at the last meeting.
Yeah.
So that's, it was kind of confusing, well...
Right, but when we start, when we start talking about policy, talking about the guns was fine. We shouldn't be having those conversations. Once they get beyond just transferring the information, we can't have those conversations online because it's not a public... But while giving you the information is great, and you guys come back and asking your questions, but we can't make any decisions. We really can't have these conversations anywhere except for when we're together at a, at a notice meeting.
Just in general principle, as far as I'm concerned, if you're given a budget that specifies you have, just to pick a figure, you have five thousand dollars to spend, and you know during the course of the year, these are the things you're going to need to operate successfully, you stay within your budget and get those things. If the, if at the end of this budgeting period, they suddenly realize that, or he suddenly realized that he needed these two pistols, I think it was sort of short sighted.
I agree with you as far as the budget goes. You're one hundred percent correct. If you need, if you know you need things, you put them in your budget. I agree with you. These items came up, hey, we're going to do this training, it'd be good for us to have these guns. Look at the budget, oh, look at, there is eight hundred dollars left. It's eight hundred dollars left in our training budget. These are gonna cost us eight hundred and eighty dollars. Comes down and asks us. And I said, well, we should talk about it at the Board of Finance. But I would suggest if we do it, on occasion, we do it. We look at lines and we say, that's going to go over. We know that the repair of our equipment, of our trucks is going to go over sometime. Gosh, I don't know, this year, I would suggest it was sometime in February, we said. Our, our cost for repair, maintenance, vehicle maintenance is going to go over. Should we put money in it now or just know that it's going to go over? Pay attention to it, watch it.
Or is it something we can put off till next year and do?
If it's something that we can put off until next year, that's what we do. That's what we do. That's what we did with the fire truck repair. You're a hundred percent right, if it's something you can put off until next year.
It was scuba. Well, I think the point is maybe order one under this fiscal year, and then three days later is the new fiscal year, you're ordering the other one. So you're not over budget, even if it's by eighty dollars, you're not over budget. And maybe there's a couple hundred dollars left in that account.
Yep, yep. Well, in the, in the grand scheme of the police budget, we will see that in the... The, at the end of the year, there's a balance remaining of one thousand one hundred dollars, or one thousand one dollar. So the line, the whole police protection did not go over its budget. In fact, that whole budget was pretty well spent. To come out only a hundred, only a thousand dollars. That particular line of training went over, according to this, it didn't go over. So this doesn't include it. So I'm not looking at...
Over eighty dollars.
Yeah.
Which I think, and just I want to be clear, it's not so much the eighty dollars, it's just maybe the process.
Oh, I understand.
Find who they cleaned up a little bit and handled a little bit different.
I understand what you're saying. And, and what we would have, but the difference is that we would have come and said, look, if they're gonna buy these guns, we would have had the conversation. We said, it's going to go over, that budget line is gonna go over by about eighty bucks. We would have, we would have said that to you. And we would have had this conversation. And I believe, based on the past, that we would have agreed that it's okay to go over eighty bucks. You're not gonna go over the total line. The town budget is in no means threatened by any of this. It was just this. And shame on me for not putting it in my notes to talk to you about it. I expected to remember to talk about it.
Both remembered it before the meeting.
Yep.
So why wouldn't they have just bought it out of miscellaneous supplies and be done with it? Because they're two thousand dollars under budget now.
We talked about that in my...
Talked about it, but...
Training.
That's exactly right.
It's a, it's a piece of equipment.
It's a training tool.
It's for the training.
I think training is the actual...
Well, you need tools for training.
You can't do that type of training without that specific.
My thought is that when you go back to the town, the town should say this, I want to say, some training, not disguising them.
Yeah.
I mean, to be honest, all of them, my opinion, because we share ours, and they get, like you said, with the street sweeper, they get beat up, no one, there's no... They should all eventually have their own issue developed, whatever's possible for it.
Yeah. Yeah, and I imagine that they will.
Right, so Mike, they were just maybe the process wasn't...
Yep, no, and I apologize for that. We should have, we should have remembered to have that conversation that night.
Yes, yes. All right, folks, let's look at the financials you received. And, and let's just start with revenue, which are the first page in your, what was sent to you. And if you were to, and this is a, this is the same conversation we have every month, but it's getting a grander conversation. If you were to look at those top, top tax lines, which is dollars collected, we collect, we've over collected two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in taxes. And those two numbers, which are refunds that we give to the elderly and to the fire department, are not accurate. I suggest that we have collected a little over three hundred thousand dollars in revenues that we did on budget. If you glance further down, you'll see on building permits, we have collected a hundred and five, a little over a hundred and five more than what we budgeted. So again, this number is getting large, is what I'm offering. If you then go down to short-term investments, we collected almost ninety thousand dollars more than what we budgeted. And we shall not continue this discussion other than to point out to you, we've got quite a bit of money. I think I said to you, six hundred and some thousand dollars of revenue. I think that number is getting higher. To give you some comfort that we will have a surplus and your thoughts on spending some of it, you should take comfort in. If you go down, this is really an odd file. It sort of disappears on you and it comes back as a... Oh, no, well, let's glance all the way down. If you go to the end of the, if you can find it, end of the revenue, the revenue says, this, this report says we have collected seven hundred and eighteen, almost seven, yeah, seven is good round, seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more in revenue than what we budgeted. And let me simply say that this is good, okay? That is the net of all of it. I, I'm going to suggest we don't, unless you have things you wish to cover, we don't have a particularly thorough discussion of expenditures because I just don't think those things, there's a lot of things that are just not in there yet.
Could I ask about, since we were talking about the police? Last year, they had a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in revenue, this year it's only a hundred and thirty. Are they doing less work for other companies and stuff?
this year it's only a hundred and thirty, are they doing less work for other companies and stuff?
Apparently, there was less, there was less this year.
Just seemed like it was more, seemed like they were everywhere, but.
Well, that's because it was rental on that street, but, yeah. No, I don't, I don't know, that's my assumption, when that, when that number is down, it's usually because there was less roadwork that they were doing.
And for the police to find, do we have a resident state trooper? Did we have paid him yet? Yes, as we paid him a hundred and sixty-seven, well, not him, we have paid the state a hundred and sixty-seven five, okay? We have a surplus there. Again, I do not think these numbers are particularly useful, other than, and Angus and I have made assumptions on here. I do believe we're correctly gonna come in and budget.
Bud, just full-time officer, what'd you say, one sixty-seven?
Uh, full, look, uh, full-time officer is one sixty-seven, yes. That was almost budgeted.
No.
No.
Oh, no, no, that's part-time. Full-time is eighty-seven.
Full-time officer is eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven thousand for full-time, uh, part-time's were a hundred and sixty-seven.
How many part-time guys do we have?
Three.
Last meeting, you said there might be an issue of scheduling?
Yeah, we're just having a hard time filling the schedule. One of our officers is unable at this point to fill some of the, some of the shifts that he should be.
And just.
Is that being paid in overtime then with the other two, or if he's not filling those spots, or?
No, we really can't, if they go over a certain number of hours, they, they fall into full-time, and then, and we don't have that budget, and we don't have their insurance and all that kind of thing.
And to, to the subject, I think the subject, there's a substantial amount of unspent in part-time and the full-time, so.
Yes.
You know, Angus was rather committed when we put this budget together, that we were going to put three, four officers on the road.
Oh, we were gonna have someone, every, we've got in this budget enough to cover every shift from six in the morning until ten at night.
Did we ever decide on marking the cars?
This consensus here was that people wanted them marked.
Are they?
No.
Doing that?
Um, we are not doing that currently. We will look at the new cars as they come in and get them marked and look at, look at them. The plan is to have all of the cars the same car, as opposed to an assortment of different cars.
Carmelo, is your question just to police? I think we should have all trucks marked, but I'm getting all subject, I think all trucks should be marked.
Yeah, I think that's it.
I'm concerned we're all subject here, but yes, I think we should have the town group, say, town of Deep River on it, so just a bit of an advertisement to say we're here.
They don't say Deep River? I always thought they did.
No, no. The license plate does. So, I think water control should have.
Are they using them for personal use?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. So they wouldn't mind putting town in Deep River, right?
I guess we've just never just put it on there, I have no idea, I, same with the, water control, I believe they are potentially used for some person.
I just had Bill do lettering on our boat, he's cheap, and he does a great job. In case you're looking for somebody.
So I'm going to abandon, unless anyone has any other questions. I do believe, if you'll notice, there's employee benefits, there's twenty-seven thousand. I believe that, we don't catch up on that for two or three months afterwards. So looking at these numbers and putting any real commitment into them is, I don't think is worth our time.
But your eight hundred thousand, we felt pretty strongly about.
Yes, because we made, for instance, you'll see in there.
We took out the print benefit and things like that.
There's oil and gas, we made the assumption that, I think it's eight thousand over now, we made the assumption it goes like ten or twelve. If you look at, and again, I do not mean to do this, but if you look at the, uh, waste removal, we were up there doing chipping right now, obviously, that's a bill, which will go in here.
That check's going out this week for fifteen thousand.
Just, and we've made assumptions on those kind of things, and that's why I do feel rather comfortable saying we're going almost for a year. So it is, our surplus is driven, for the most part, by unplanned revenues. And, well, here I am, I said I wasn't gonna do it. If you look at capital, which is a substantial, with the new capital account that we have, if we do not spend capital this year, it will move into that capital account and be used for whatever was the intended in a future time period. So you can't count capital as surplus. All right, I'm going to go into a mode of code of silence unless anyone else has questions.
So is the library updating their stuff? I mean, I just noticed they were.
Do that again, it's the library.
The library, did they do what they were supposed to do?
Uh, I'll take.
Because there's ninety-two thousand still remaining out of a hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's, that's a blunder.
Oh, okay. I didn't remember budget, but it's like. I was thinking it was ten thousand for windows and a few other things, but, okay.
They asked that their windows go into this account that they will do next year. All right, and that surplus, anyone have any other thoughts that they wish to share?
Can I ask you a question? Where does the chemical study, where, where is that going so far? The lady from middle.
Yeah, yeah, she, she sent me a note that said she's got a draft that she's getting ready to send out. She's still gotta come and interview employees, but she's, she's gotten very close to completing.
So she's got them job then?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
She's very close to completing it. I expect that we'll have, you know, by the end of the summer.
And what she's doing is going through everybody's position to see what it entails, and then what they're being paid.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's what the study says.
Comparing ours, comparing ours, she's, there's a couple of different tasks. First is comparing our salaries to other communities our size, you know, area, and larger than us and smaller than us, just comparing our salaries with similar type jobs. Then she's going through the job descriptions, and that's why the employees had to spend quite a bit of time completing a big questionnaire about their job. And she's gonna follow that up with an interview, interview of the employees, so that she can put together a, a, recommended job description for each position. And then that will, you know, the last time this town did this was nineteen ninety-one, which was too long. We should probably do this every ten or fifteen years.
Okay, second question is, what's happened with the firehouse study? The guys who came in and?
Yeah, that just got here, we just delivered that at the last selectmen's meeting. If you need one, we can get one to you, big book.
Did you read the whole thing?
Yeah, I read the back page.
The executive summary?
Yeah, yeah.
Any highlights?
No, no, I have not read enough to be able to say anything. I don't think they made a lot of changes to the draft that they put together, but I haven't had a chance to read it.
But that would impact what we're going to be doing for a firehouse, right? Their study?
Their, the draft study did not really address the firehouse needs, other than to say, you need a firehouse. But yes, it, it, it could impact how we move forward in a lot of different things. More important to me is, I haven't seen in this, and we asked for it because the draft didn't have it, do we need to replace a truck every twenty years? Or based on mileage, based on calls, what is the, what's the answer? In the draft, they simply said, replace the truck as needed, a well-maintained truck can last as long as it's still running properly. So that's what it said, I don't know what the final one says, I haven't, I haven't finished it yet, it just, just was delivered last week.
Yeah, I'd be interested in reading what it says.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll, we'll get you one.
Good.
Actually, those will probably end up online once, once it.
Oh, no, that's the.
Yeah, it's in the town paper. It's public, public news, so it'll probably end up on the website.
Excellent. We didn't put the draft on a lot, did we?
No, you shouldn't put a draft.
Okay, really? All right, here it is, here it is, does anyone have anything else that they wish to discuss? Now, can I have a motion to, to revide, I said that last time, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, first.
Second.
Anyway, second, hold on, favor.
All right.